Sandy, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good, how are you?
Good. Do you want to say?
Sure.
I'm going to go.
And if you have your...
You can actually do it if you wanted.
Yeah.
Recording in progress.
I listen.
Well, good morning, everyone. It is now nine o'clock. Welcome, everyone, to today's regular work plan, commissioners. We, on this Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. Let's, let's have an invitation. Commissioner Tony has for two two ladies and invitation.
Lord, please walk through our homes today. Remove stress and worry. Place your guardian angels around us, keeping our home safe and healthy. Fill with peace.
Commissioner, please welcome, please, ladies and the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, well, Congressman Tony, Mr. Hesse here. Commissioner, please welcome him here. Commissioner, please. Here. For all of the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Tony?
No changes, Commissioner.
We, we were looking at I-78. Do you want us to proceed with that?
You could either table at the time that Tony comes up.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you. Clarification, uh, you have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda. Second motion.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
Yes. Section two, out of, we have a very important perspective here. To be consideration of meeting minutes for July 19, 2022. Any questions, commissioners? Would you like to, I'll entertain a motion.
We go for approval of the regular meeting minutes for July 19, 2022. Second motion.
Commissioner, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
To be special meeting minutes of July 25, 2022. Questions, discussion, otherwise I will entertain the motion.
We approve special meeting minutes July 25, 2022. Second motion.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
Yes, sir. To see special meeting, BOE hearing, in, in an address of a, BOE hearing, meeting minutes about second, 2022. Any discussion, otherwise I'll entertain the motion.
We go for approval of special meeting minutes, BOE hearing, meeting minutes about second, 2022. Second motion.
Commissioner, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, section three, uh, meeting my correspondence, commissioners, can you be first, uh, we saw the video, would you like to approach?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, and I'll let, uh, you also share with Commissioner Lopez and his assets, uh, he was, uh, he said, of September, we, uh, were able to meet with the US Army, the Baltimore Service. There's some concerns, uh, of low-level fights that was addressed. And we had some local folks that were attending these meetings as well, with some concerns. So it was very productive. Um, we also had some representatives from the, uh, Union Canyon there as well. Uh, so far Carson was represented and the meeting was successful and it was always nice to have that relationship, communication with Los Angeles County Commissioners. Uh, the only concern I had, in fact, um, we didn't see any work of county commissioners at the meeting. I only have liaison there, um, but there's a lot of flexible people in the lower area of California as well. And just so that community understands it. They did have representative there, this is how it was in the commissioners. Um, on the ninth, we had a CCI, um, Southern District meeting, uh, here at Trinidad State and, uh, Steve, Commissioner's Tony Hesse was our moderator for the event and our president of CCI, Commissioner Lopez, was also instrumental in this, in putting this together. And I'll let them give the reports from that, that meeting and process they've heard at that time. And thank you, gentlemen, for hosting that and for being so professional, representing the San Luis County. On the fourteenth, we had the South Central Council of Governments Recovery Roadmap meeting that was held right here and I was able to attend, uh, the first hour, hour and a half of those meetings and I want to thank our staff who came here with them and endorsed to, uh, many different entities that came and had that discussion. I'm sure we'll, we'll hear some reports coming out of that and what the discussions were made in the afternoon workout session soon. And, uh, again, thank you for hosting and Commissioner Markham and our staff, our team, our maintenance guys for bringing up the tables and chairs and getting it reset with that. And then on the sixteenth, I had a Friday meeting, uh, with the new president of the FNC, gentlemen, too much now, to have a discussion with him for various charitable partners incorporated or that I saw, will any mechanisms and offering our services to their bank customers that cannot, um, qualify for traditional lending? So that was a successful meeting and we opened, uh, some eyes, um, and gave them information to reach out to the network for possible work customers and members of our partners for our charitable and charity.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tony, yes?
As Commissioner Lopez had stated, we all three, it was attended the Southern Colorado Working Group in the Army Committee December of the Center. Um, their loss of birth, the primary purpose of the meeting was to meet with the new commander of the PC, Major General Joseph Anderson. One question asked of the major was, is there any talk with expansion? He said, not during this two-year term there. Reason I asked was in January, Secretary General James Dodd, he was asked the same question and he said, well, not for the next five years, mainly due to huge budget costs. More comments and concerns about the little cotter gates wearing low, low flyers, sometimes as low as 50 to 100 feet above ranch residents. Major said he'd take care of it, so we're going to take him by his word and hopefully he'll, he'll, uh, host those young men, lift to 500 feet when they go over those red lights. September night, CCI Southern District meeting, which I chair. That TSC, TSC, in the five-year agreement was very well attended, 56 participants and commissioners from the districts within. The presentations from CSU, uh, Extension Services Legislative Update by CCI staff and, uh, Noah presentation, but the main topic to concern, uh, when we reviewed legislation was the pipeline for the interface introduction. Uh, this dominated the better part of half the meeting. The committee is an elected board that are not experts in their field, will have the authority to impose guidelines on new builds and renovations of existing ones for some, for fire suppression. First problem is that these rules and regs would be an unfounded mandate to the county. Second, the second concern is that the general public, the residents, would have no appeal process. The, the third concern is who's going to endorse this? And the fourth point that I brought up, the representatives from the WUAS said that the objects cost of these upgrades would be $3,000 per household. And, uh, some are reminded that some of our rural counties' average income per capita is less than $3,000 a year. That's 10% of their annual, their annual income per year. How's that for? On the fourteenth, I had a meeting, when this meeting was going on here, I had a meeting with, sort of advisory meeting, which I was appointed to by City Mayor. And, uh, I think that I'm going to resign from that, gentlemen, because they've already lost their, their director, they're looking for a person to take this position already. They don't have the funding to, uh, even offer a mileage or, uh, it just seems to me that they've got a lot of work to do before they can lift this thing off the ground and they want us to, uh, travel throughout the state and do tours, but they're not going to pay us for the mileage. I just think that, and quite frankly, I believe the conservation districts already do this work after over 70 years, think it's a good bit of services. Um, also, uh, on the fifteenth, I had a meeting with CHP, a very likely bus chair, and, uh, there's more information coming tomorrow, but, uh, what I got from the meeting was there would be no change in, uh, the tier, we're going to stay at tier one in our insurance. And, uh, but there is a change for the entire state, which is a 5% decrease across the board. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I want to touch on the September 7 meeting that we had with the Florida Department, a couple of conversations that we have had and also some of the members of the federal delegation have already reached out to the county. The one moment conversation was the pipeline that goes through the facility and that facility, uh, because of the pipeline, uh, in where it is located, it is impeding for the Union Canyon Maneuver Site to use all the, uh, terrain that they have accessible for training. So the federal delegation, some of them have requested a map from Los Angeles County to see where the pipeline is located. Now, the cost is pretty insurmountable, it's $40 million to, to move that pipeline relocated. So maybe there may be an opportunity and I really want to put, uh, fellow Commissioner Tony as his, uh, on the meeting, basically, they are not, they don't have the capacity to use the entire, the entire, uh, water lab, so let's really work with them and I'm hoping that the federal delegation will appropriate dollars for them to relocate that. The other perspective that I wanted to say thank you to is the Dorian Cam on that regular meeting, our veterans from Los Angeles County are being served by the, uh, what is it, the proper?
Vision?
Vision?
22.
Vision 22, which comes out of Albuquerque, New Mexico. And so our veterans, rather than having the services here in Los Angeles County and/or in Colorado, have to follow south. And in that too, we've had an opportunity to visit with a couple of the Senator, Representatives, and, uh, hopefully, uh, they'll be, uh, they'll have an opportunity to work with, with, uh, and provide services in Colorado for the people of Colorado. So the, again, without being redundant, uh, September 14th, uh, South Council of Governments presents a recovery roadmap. The, uh, conversation was, uh, around broadband and rural housing and everyone in San Luis County was talking about broadband, specifically for, for counties that powers, uh, frontier counties that, uh, we have underserved sections east and west of Los Angeles County. So that conversation is going on, uh, pretty steady and there is a lot of funding that's coming either from the state and our federal governments to provide, uh, those monies to expand the services for our communities. On the same day, September 14th, Sheriff Nabaret invited me to attend a meeting with them with, uh, this jail feasibility study for the Warford County Facility. As you drive up and down I-25, there's a facility on the east side of I-25 and that facility has sat there for, I don't know how many years. But right now, with the new jail standards commissioned, jails and facilities throughout the state are going to have to comply with so many new mandates. So Sheriff Nabaret and, uh, Warford County and a group from Custer County are looking at that facility. So we kind of meeting last, the fourteenth, and yesterday, we had another meeting to follow up the conversation with a representative, a representative that joined us was, uh, Liberty Judy Amabile from Boulder. And she is so interested in doing this study, this building study, because it could provide, uh, relief for some of the jails in rural areas. And there was a program that, uh, the organizer of the meeting was, uh, Mr. Rida Torres, talking about jail-to-community transition. And on this jail-to-community transition, it would provide inmates or incarcerated individuals an opportunity to train, to get mental health, medical help, and any other help that they might need so they can make the transition seamlessly. And then we talked about the opportunities that we have to provide vocational training here in Los Angeles County, of course, we have a Trinidad State College that could perhaps join the conversation. So the next steps are going to be, uh, look at, more meetings ongoing now. One of the, uh, Mr. Robert Young from Walsonburg identified that from Warford County, the cost of the facility is about $40 million and we don't know exactly if the facility meets the standards, but there is a good conversation going on and the recommendation would be that let's not only take a look at that facility, but do a feasibility study for the entire state of Colorado. Uh, the, uh, the opportunity to comply, and I, and I think that the representative and I exchanged a couple of opportunities to partner and take some of the underground mandates from the counties and let the Colorado Legislature work with us and help us meet some of those expenses, see where that goes. And, uh, that would be my report. And, uh, on the 12th, I, on the 15th, I traveled to Buffalo, I'll let Sandy there, uh, speak about a great, great celebration of that 60th anniversary of, uh, health solutions of, uh, your partners. And so that would be my report. Public comment, we have here list of elected officials updates. Do we have any one of the elected officials online, uh, joining, responding, our county assessor? No updates? Do we have anyone from the clerk and reporter? Anyone from the treasurer's office? Is there any? We have anyone from the sheriff's office? Sheriff Nabaret? And I have asked Sheriff Nabaret to provide us an update on all this conversation that's going on with, uh, with this jail feasibility study, so I'm hoping that he'll provide us in the community an update of what's going on there. Anyone from the district's attorney's office? Anyone from the coroner's office? County surveyor? Okay. Let's now go to, uh, public comment. We have, uh, Mr. Thorn, the Aguilar Bar. You see online or Mr. Thorn? Anyone to address the Aguilar Bar? Otherwise, we'll come back to it. Um, Sandy, can you tell us, would you please join us?
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. Um, thank you so much for allowing me to be here this morning and thank you for always being so helpful to me when I make my phone calls and to the viewers. Um, I am actually here on behalf of our CEO, Jason Chapeau. Uh, he apologizes that he's not able to be with us today. Uh, he had the, uh, famous bout of COVID and he's doing better and then we're going to be heading up to our conference here this afternoon. But, um, as Commissioner Lopez mentioned, on the 15th of this month, Health Solutions celebrated its 60th anniversary. We have been serving Pueblo, Warford, and Los Angeles Counties for the past 60 years. Uh, our job is to help improve the health of, of our communities, specifically in the mental health arena. Commissioner Lopez did attend that event, so thank you so much for joining us and celebrating that monumental, uh, event with us. I do want to also share that, um, last year alone, Health Solutions served over 13,000 unique clients and that's in our three county catchment area. Um, and if you could imagine without Health Solutions, where those individuals would be without not having access to the services that we provide. We are very committed to our relationship here in, uh, Los Angeles County. Um, I actually serve on the coalition that works toward a drug-free community. Um, Commissioner Lopez and I both serve on that and we are very committed to doing our part to help, uh, again, improve the health of, of Los Angeles County. Um, through our trade association, Colorado Behavioral Health Council, we have the opportunity to nominate a behavioral health champion. And we nominated Commissioner Lopez last year and we are so grateful that he was awarded the community behavioral health champion for our county here in Los Angeles. But truly for us and Health Solutions, it, to us, it represents all three of our counties. Uh, we love to work together, we love, uh, to work in collaboration with all of our partners across our catchment area. So Commissioner Lopez, it is my honor to present to you the 2022 Behavioral Health Champion from Colorado Behavioral Health Council.
Thank you.
I think we can let him put in our use letter.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for honoring.
Thank you, Sandra. Oh, I appreciate this.
I do also want to, um, thank our other commissioners. We know that it truly takes a village, uh, to lift up a community and we appreciate the work that you do as well and we definitely look forward to our continued relationship, um, through Health Solutions and other things that we're, we're looking forward to working with them. So on behalf of our organization, thank you all for all that you do.
Thanks, let me turn. Sandy, thank you so much for being here today and honoring my fellow commissioner. Um, we are very proud to have, and I'm very proud to be able to work with Commissioner Lopez and Commissioner National, of course. But want to thank Health Solutions for being a part of our community. I know you recently changed, like, five, six years ago.
2015.
But Spanish speaks and the Health Solutions have been here helping our community, helping our, our residents, uh, and then you've been touching on the home with, with some of us, uh, here and there at times. So thank you, the Health Solutions, for being a part of our community and all your professionals that work with us. Please give my questions here. Thank you for the board.
Sandy, I'm a short of commissioners.
Yeah, Sandy, thank you for what you do and what Health Solutions does for our community. What an honor it is to work with these gentlemen there and team of San Luis County.
Well, Sandy, on behalf of the San Luis County Board of County Commissioners, thank you so much, Sandy. Humble, uh, very, I'm honored to receive this award and I can tell you one thing, I will continue to work really hard to have a voice for the citizens and to have a representative that speaks not only here in Los Angeles County, but anywhere in the state when it comes to disadvantages that we have when it comes to behavioral health and access to those services. So I'm really honored to have this and, uh, please give, uh, our best and my best to your board and to the Colorado Behavioral Health Council. Uh, it is, uh, I'm, uh, I'm man of few words and we'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
That's up, David.
Thank you, Sandy. Really appreciate it. Thank you for coming down.
Excellent.
Yes. Well, we go to the next, uh, item, uh, order of business and finished business. I don't believe we have any. Section seven, uh, new business consideration of the Shannon Pitt permit number M-1979-163. Annual report mapped and fee, Mr. Dorian Cam.
Commissioner Floyd, your consideration is, for annual submission to the Colorado Mission of Emergency Life Safety for Shannon Pitt, as you mentioned, Commissioner, permit number eight, 1979, 163, for mapping fee. It's a 112 permit, which means it's over 10 acres and, uh, fee due is $791 plus the charges for using credit card.
Any questions, comments, commissioners? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve Shannon Pitt's permit number M-1975-163, annual report mapped and fee, second motion.
Commissioner, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
Yes. Seven B consideration of gray and black market marijuana enforcement grant, Mr. Dorian Cam.
Commissioner Floyd, your consideration is gray, black, market marijuana enforcement grant, I would defer to finance director, Mr. Colby, Mr. Smith.
So this grant is, we're not requesting, it's determined by population, the whole area applied, uh, the code, marijuana, you know, different things. So this is just submitting the application to the board. And I don't even think there's no signature. I just need to have, let me say that, the date that the board approved it.
And the total funding request, that's we have here, 137,480 and that?
That's what the sheriff was requesting, but it's determined by population, so that should be about $5,000.
Okay, very good. Well. It's, it's always good to go for the, uh, a lot or not.
Right.
If I remember correctly, Chris, when we started this application, it was six years ago, we were denied, the first year, the second year, we received 45,000.
Something like that.
Yeah, they changed the parameters of this grant, is that why the reduction is?
They did, because it was a reimbursement, the first time we received the grant, where they reimbursed us. This one here now is, is determined by population and I think what the area, the growth, the cases, I guess prosecution of, of, I guess, the, the growth.
Yeah, the eradication.
Yes. So that's it, Chris.
Thank you. I have other questions. Just, uh, entertain the motion, please.
Motion to approve the gray and black marijuana enforcement grant, second motion.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
Yes, sir. Seven C consideration of marijuana's legal license, we know, Council.
I previewed the application and I had any concerns.
Thank you, uh, Senator. Any questions, otherwise I'll entertain the motion.
For approval of marijuana's, uh, last, this one.
Second.
Commissioner, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
Yes. Seven B consideration of Sapphire Valley Water Association Certificate Statement, tabs number 426, number 427, and number 428, Mr. Dorian Cam.
Commissioner Floyd, your consideration is Sapphire Valley Water Association Certificate Statement. In a nutshell, the county has three water caps into the Sapphire Valley Water Line. There's showing here, agenda 426, 27, 28. 26 and 27 are currently charged and operating, one goes to the airport, the terminal, there goes to the little bridge shop, correct me if I'm stating this incorrectly, uh, and 428 is the one that the board actually needs to see the certificate on and right now it is not tapped into this Sapphire Valley Water Line. The board needs to, if it so desires, they can commit that, yes, it's built to be in some future day, initially in a parcel that it will, um, have water go to. Don't necessarily have to tap, but you have to commit that, uh, which we, it will be assigned to a parcel. What they're trying to do, my understanding is, I have to speak with the city trinity now, is there apparently some leases, there were some tabs out there in Sapphire Valley that owners are wanting to lease, or most lease to other folks who they want to tie into the Sapphire Valley. The city, my understanding is they, we frown upon that and I can understand why, because in the course of, it's a particular lease, the water tab attached in their line and then the lease owner, the leasing owners is, uh, leases the longer, persons attacking the water line without the lease, perpetuity, it may go on in that lease. So if you want to clean it up, if you own the water tab and it's not being utilized and you have a commitment, we have this certificate that, uh, it's going to be used on these certain parcels, we're going to own that parcel, if we ever choose to tap one of them.
Do you know if, if they're looking at limiting the amounts of permits, there would be about a whole war?
What I understand is that there is a high demand for new tabs on the Sapphire Valley Water Line, that this is the first step in that process, is to make sure that there aren't any angry tabs out there, leased off to other folks. And in my understanding is, the city at that time may look at issues more water tech opportunities in Sapphire Valley, think it can turn out solid to potential customers in the future.
As we retain this, we do have the, uh, the buildings, if we have to use the, we wanted to use the water, we do have the, uh, coverage to. if we wanted to use the water, we do have the power to take advantage of that.
That's correct. And I guess it'd be a determination of whether we want to assign a parcel to the terminal or road bridge shop or in the future from our potential laws and industrial department. Realize also, we got an additional tap that comes off the, you know, canyon Department Correction Water Line that comes in from the, from the north there. I don't know for what the county move is that ties into that one part. But it hasn't been tied into any industrial park, any of the facilities there.
Well, Mr. Larson, these water taps are physical taps, correct? Are they a certificate of those waters?
The four twenty-eight is not this is the tap here. It needs to be committed to a process.
So if it's committed to that, will we have to pay for the tap? Or is that already paid?
I believe.
You pay for fifty dollars?
We paid for the tap, just there.
So if we don't commit to it, will we be reimbursed for those years of not using that tap?
No, sir, because any tap that is all by the county, there is a minimum fee. So to see whether or not we utilize that, we've utilized that tap or not.
You have been our best interest to the board, isn't it?
Thank you, bro. Thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Suntar Valley Water Solutions Certificate Statements on Taps Water for six forty-two. Second motion.
Mission ask?
Yes.
Mission release open?
Yes.
Mission please.
Consideration of the CGRS application. Colorado, Colorado.
Mission's four-three consideration is a grant reimbursement on that. CGRS is only just submitted on our behalf. This goes back to the fuel line leak. We have the playgrounds, it just, purification of the leak was such a minimal amount that there was no contamination there. But I think CGRS revealed obviously seven different holes in that period to determine the depth of that fuel leakage had leaked into the soils and sent that information to our department, the local department. And there was no mediation as part of mitigation as a part. So minimal amount picked up. This would just seek reimbursement for some of the costs that the county incurred.
Questions, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
We move to approve the CGRS application.
Second motion.
Mission release open?
Yes.
Mission ask?
Yes.
Mission please.
Yes.
Seven, A consideration of OBCC number seven zero zero two to Eric Herrera for two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-nine cents. Please look over documents. Any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve OBCC number seven zero zero two, Eric Herrera, for two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second motion.
Mission ask?
Yes.
Mission release open?
Yes.
Mission please.
Yes.
Seven, A consideration of OBCC number seven zero zero three to Breckman's Office for one twenty-five and fourteen cents. Second motion.
Mission please.
Yes.
Mission ask?
Yes.
Mission please.
Yes.
Seven, A consideration of two thousand and twenty-three insurance renewal change form. Mr. Thorn.
Mission's four-three consideration is the two thousand and twenty-three insurance renewal change form. CTSI administrative assistance, all of us shall receive that information this morning. I might have time to review it. I don't think council has. I don't think any folks have it. And the deadline, if it's submitted manually, is October seventh. If it's submitted online, it is September thirty. And my recommendation, I'll release that time to review the provision within that form before the board considers, I think.
Any questions? Pursuant to the motion of your trust. I'm taking, I'm taking, I'll make the motion to table twenty-one thirty to the motion. Second motion.
Mission ask?
Yes.
Mission release open?
Yes.
Mission please.
Section eight, financial matters, consideration of bills and payroll for the first cap of September two thousand and twenty-two. Where are they going?
We will add to September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, is one hundred ninety-two thousand, three twenty-six and sixty-nine cents. Okay, any questions on payroll? Bills paid on September seventh. Sixty-three thousand, ninety-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. Within this packet, we have Allison oil repair and some repairs at the health department for seven thousand, eight hundred and two sixty-four. Our cost allocation that we have an agreement with them for five thousand two hundred, they turned around and they actually did the cost allocation. We should just one hundred and sixty-five thousand for that grant. So we hired this company that does it and so we turned in here sixty-five cents on that. So now we come through two thousand and twenty-three. Bills paid on September fourteenth, one hundred forty-six thousand, three oh nine, seventy-three cents. Within this packet, there was airport equipment for twenty-four thousand. The final payment to our auditor was fourteen thousand. And let's see, Roden Bridge cap sheet for ten thousand, thirty dollars and eighty-four cents. And that's all our bills and evil.
Questions? Just want to be, uh, help the department, do only that to grant. Have we applied for, for the areas of the sector?
No, we budgeted for that.
Budgeted.
We budgeted.
Yeah, that was one sixty-five.
Yeah, let me see if I can read that for the health department.
We haven't had a board meeting recently, so I haven't had a discussion.
Well, boiler for, I think, was for the county. And then the governor says, um, health department replaced OBD. I don't know what that is, but I thought it was something for, is that air condition? For four thousand, six forty-three that we paid.
That was way earlier in the spring. It was very quickly, they just left the county and so.
AMS.
Okay, that's, that's when they did the heating irrigation preparation.
Right, yeah. So the county actually, since we budgeted for repairs, for health department, we paid for that. For four thousand, six forty-three.
Take the certification. And what was the fifty-three thousand for four rivers?
Um, what, what date is that on? Four, four rivers you're asking for, I think it's all for different things for road and brakes that we're looking at. Just different repairs, engine repair, cutting edge, delivery. It's just, there's many different.
Commissioner, so if I may, I'm a gentleman. The board approved a bid, the very first part of this year for cutting edges. And looking through the financials, we noticed that the cutting edge was worth home budget. But the cutting edge line in two thousand and twenty-two had not been spent. And so we quizzed, as the board members said, we expected to notice for the fifty-three, not forty-three thousand, whatever that bid was, was a bid that the board approved earlier. So I think the biggest part of that is cutting edges for water.
If you look up, you take ten, you take two.
I need to be in that person's shoes. We didn't have that there.
There's ten people just.
All right, now I can do the right thing.
Kind of the same question, the airport service equipment, twenty-four thousand dollars each.
We'll, we'll get fifteen thousand back because it's lent. So our portion, I think, is that ten percent of the total?
The first purchase, county pays twenty percent, CHA pays eighty percent. Second purchase is split half and half into two purchases worth four, skid steers at twelve thousand dollars each. So whatever that might amount to, that's how much we'll, we'll reimburse.
And they're going to reimburse us fifteen thousand, right?
It may be a little over twenty-one thousand.
Very good. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve of bills and payroll for the first cap of September two thousand and twenty-two. Second.
Mission release open?
Yes.
Mission ask?
Yes.
Mission please.
Yes. Information only, AP, financials as of August, the House of Representatives.
Okay, so on page one, I'll just reveal a little bit. We have general fund, that's a surplus of five thousand, seven hundred thousand. Roden Bridge is a surplus of five thousand, eight twelve. So we did receive some additional funding, so it kind of, so it kind of brought it up a little bit last, last time we spoke, I was worried. So I think he's going to be okay, Bishop.
A five thousand dollars is a better.
On the.
I was going to say.
Airporting has a deficit of two hundred and twenty-two, but that is because with FAA, the industrial park, I have a transfer of money from capital for general fund. Also too, we also have money coming from FAA. So that will actually get better, just I'm saying that.
Oh, we still carry a deficit?
We probably will, but, but not, not as bad as it is right now. I think I'm going to transfer one hundred and ninety-one thousand right now just to actually cover some of that deficit. So that's what that is. Contingent, we have a surplus of a hundred thousand. Capital, we have a surplus of six hundred and seven. We're not done with the project, the phase two, because it's going to load a screen time. So we still have some expenses there and then also reimbursement for, for any grants that we have underfunded. By the way, we did get, we did get approval from DOLA to get an extension on this grant. And waiting for hundred seven to give us an approval, to give an extension until September of two thousand and twenty-three. Water gave a surplus of twenty-six thousand. Pilkfield surplus of eight four thousand. The DY area is a surplus of one thousand four hundred. And we have a deficit of jail improvement, and I will transfer the funds to cover that by April. And I'd say if you have any questions, if you've looked into any of the balance sheets, that tells a lot more detail.
I know this information only, but this is, you read, so I like this format that you set.
Yeah, I like to look at the comparison of the balance sheet. That tells a lot more detail.
And taxes of one hundred and one million dollars in the asset fund outside. Appreciate the work of all the, all the team, as Commissioner has it. Think of the San Luis really with the job schedule. Any other questions, commissioners, on that second? Otherwise, at this time, I'm not going to do a long amount to the DHS meeting, but I would like to entertain a motion with going to suspend this being going to DHS for best computer business.
Motion to suspend regular water consumption for nature, for, 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 for the category.
Second motion.
Mission ask?
Yes.
Mission release open?
Yes.
Mission please.
It's a letter to the boss, not that.
Yes, sir.
Recording stopped.
How you doing, man?
Good, you guys?
Good.
I forgot about the last one, Nick. I was quick with the last one in the calendar, but.
Yeah. See, I'm getting one.